Can't hear.
Madam Mayor, microphone is cutting in and out. Are you speaking directly into it?
Let me see if this is, is this better?
That's better.
Okay, I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Would you please do the roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
President.
Councilman Trolinger.
President.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
President.
Councilman Jenkins.
President.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And if you all would stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And counsel, if you've had a moment to look at our agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, we have two sets of minutes that are attached to your agenda. I will entertain a motion for the minutes approval. From anyone?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us down to our first part of the agenda, which is our public comment. If there is anyone who would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I know I have Kenny and Molly here, so Kenny, you're up. And then if anybody else would like to speak. State your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kenny Eckstat. I am a resident of La Plata. In August, I responded to the La Plata Community Survey and eagerly awaited the results, which were shared in the latest town newsletter. My personal survey responses aligned closely with the results presented, so I'd like to share some sentiment behind the numbers. The results definitely do show positives in the town, and I believe these high points can be attributed to wonderful town programs, such as Bird City, Tree City, and Bee City, and rock-solid town services. At the same time, there are some alarming statistics. Almost one-third of residents would not recommend La Plata as a place to live, and 52% of residents report that it is very unlikely that they will remain in La Plata for the next 10 years. Low scores persist for areas concerning mobility, planning, and preservation of natural areas. Only 27% of residents approve of the overall direction La Plata is taking. To say the quiet part out loud, citizens are disillusioned with the course of development activity in La Plata, reflected in large sprawling projects such as Pine Grove. The La Plata Comprehensive Plan mandates considerations for affordability, walkability, and environmentalism, yet projects that deride these values are approved without question. The Pine Grove project promotes rampant deforestation through clearcutting, improper use of TDX zoning with disparate residential and commercial areas, and unaffordable housing units designed to maximize out-of-state corporate profits. We should acknowledge Pine Grove was hastily revived and approved during a pandemic, insidiously changed its name after approval to obfuscate planning documents, and fundamentally does not align with the values of La Plata's comprehensive plan. Optimistically, though, I believe that if Pine Grove is able to correct course, it could become one of the town's greatest assets, avoiding the impending damage to La Plata's sustainability. Citizens are eager to engage when development projects are well-advertised, as evidenced by the MDOT Route 6 presentations and updates, which bring attendance that fills this entire room. Lack of public engagement should be recognized as a failure of advertisement and notification of critical town projects, not as resident apathy or a signal of consent. As a sign of good faith, I implore La Plata to pause Pine Grove, suspend all plat approvals, and block additional forest harvests until the master site development plan is reopened for well-advertised public hearings to address deficiencies. For corporations, these planning and development decisions simply represent the fastest way to exploit an area for profit before moving to another location. But for us, it represents long-lasting effects on our lives for years to come. Please ensure that the decisions made in La Plata prioritize residents over corporate interests. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Molly.
Good evening. My name is Molly Pincus, and I'm a resident of the town of La Plata. I'm addressing the town council today to bring to your attention the illegal actions of the Texas-based corporation D.R. Horton as it relates to the 1,000-acre building, say, called Pine Grove, formerly called Heritage Green. D.R. Horton has repeatedly and continuously violated Maryland Environment Articles Titles 4 and 9, as documented by Maryland Department of the Environment Compliance Inspections. D.R. Horton has failed 92 environmental inspections since September 2021 related to both sediment and erosion control and the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Act. The most recent inspection failures related to sediment and erosion control occurred on December 4, 2024, with multiple repeat violations being highlighted by the MDE. I have provided additional supporting details regarding these failed inspections via email directly to the town council this afternoon. D.R. Horton's continued negligence regarding control of sediment, erosion, and runoff pollution demonstrates their blatant disregard for our town's natural resources, turning Clark's Run, the greenway backbone of our town, into a dumping ground for excess sediment, with no regard for the negative consequences to wildlife habitat, the health of residents, or the preservation of the only nature area within the town, and is antithetical to the goals of the town's comprehensive plan. Although irreparable damage has been done to the Clark's Run watershed and the town of La Plata's existing forest canopy, it is not too late to correct the oversights of past approvals and create a sustainable path to move forward with the input of residents and environmental experts. I respectfully request that the town council immediately hold D.R. Horton accountable for their continued negligent and illegal conduct by issuing a stop-work order in accordance with the authority granted by Title 26 of the Maryland Code of Regulations, until the pollution violations are proven to be fully remediated based on inspection by the MDE. In addition to the immediate stop-work order, I also respectfully request that the Pine Grove Master Site Development Plan be reevaluated and reopened for public comment in order for amendments to be considered in light of D.R. Horton's demonstration of negligence and inability to appropriately manage a project of this size in accordance with both federal and state water pollution laws. D.R. Horton has requested and been granted multiple amendments to the Master Site Development Plan. Therefore, it's only fair that La Plata residents are granted the same opportunity to request amendments. I'm confident that the town council will take action in a manner that respects our town values rather than the values of sprawl and destruction that define outside corporate interests. I greatly appreciate your time, and I implore you to please seriously consider my two requests. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Molly. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Very well-prepared and very eloquently spoken on both your parts. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next part, it is Ms. Larson with your expense report. If you all have had an opportunity to look at that, do you have any questions for Ms. Larson?
Go ahead.
Thank you again for the report. I see this is a much, I guess, condensed report.
Yes, you will receive the typical report next week.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying that for me, at least, it does provide some clarity.
Yeah, I felt this was the most important information of the report.
Well said. So if I read this right, so budget-wise, we're doing pretty good?
Yes.
Being, being over halfway through the current fiscal year.
Yes, there are some areas of concern. One of them is IT, mainly because we are identifying areas of inefficiency, and we need to address those. That's really the only one that's probably going to be over budget at this point. I will be more prepared on what we need to do as the year goes on.
And is there any overtime issue that will affect the budget?
Not at this point.
At this point?
Yeah, things could change.
Sure. And then maybe a future question. But I know we had a work session in early this year about the draft, or how we're going to do the, change the CIP Capital Improvement Program Plan. So are we going to have another retreat for the budget in January, or is that in lieu of?
I was not going to do a retreat for this year with the budget. I am working, trying to rearrange how we're doing things with the departments. So this year, I figure we'll just work with the departments, get more detail, more analysis on the expenses, and that will be presented to the Finance Committee and then presented to the council.
So will we get any kind of pre-budget information?
Yes, you'll get the budget prior to.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying. I'm not phrasing this correctly. I guess I just would like to have some information before we actually, like, what is the status? I mean, we're going to get as close as we can to half, almost year, not quite year-end, but halfway through the budget year, what the indicators say. Like last year, I mean, you talked about challenges and issues. Are we going to get at least something like that?
I will do a mid-year review. Yes, yes, there will be a mid-year review that you will report on.
And I ask that because, again, from my perspective, that would be very helpful to, again, get out in front of this when we, to be very transparent and talk and give this information to the public.
Yes.
Because I'm also, as your mayor, man, I know I have a podcast and a video, and I'm doing one right now that's going to talk about last year's budget. And then assuming we approve the dates for all the meetings, I'm going to talk about that as well. I just, again, just expressed the concern that we just need to be very transparent and tell the public what's going on with the budget.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Larson, is it possible to get another breakdown of the contract spending from fiscal year to date?
Yeah, actually, I'm working on the budget report, or that you will get, not budget report, but monthly report that you will get next week that will have the contractors. If you want more detail than that, I can send you a listing.
Yeah, just a list of the contractors and spending for the fiscal year to date. And I noticed that this report is as of September, not even October.
Yeah, October's coming next week.
Are we always two months in?
We are. One thing I'm trying to do, and part of that reason is because I don't get that information from the departments. There's a paper trail. We get an invoice, it goes to the departments, it may be several weeks before we get it. So I'm trying to give you as up-to-date information. If I provided, say, November is next week, you're not going to have the full picture. You're going to be missing some information, and you're probably missing some information here because I don't have it. And that's what I'm trying to get these departments to send me these invoices. I mean, even FY '24 invoices, I'm still getting those.
So when you get the invoices? Are they paid invoices?
No.
Okay, so then that's irrelevant, right? Because we don't do accrual, we are accrual method, actually.
We are cruel, but say that the service happened in October. I may not get that invoice until mid-December. So if I run you.
But you won't pay it until mid-December, so.
It doesn't matter on the payday. It matters on when the service. So accrual accounting is based on the service, when the service is rendered.
I'm clear on accrual accounting, but repeatedly I've asked, are we accrual in cash? And I've been told.
So we're accrual accounting, except for general fund is modified accrual accounting, which really affects debt and capital assets. Accrual accounting, so let me give an example. Say that, let's use recycling. We get the bill for September's recycling. We get it mid-October. It goes to the department to verify that the count is correct on the home, to approve by the department. Then it comes to us, and that might be a couple of weeks later. And then we're entering it and reviewing the information, confirming it. So I'm trying to make sure you guys have a full picture instead of a half of a picture, because I don't have that information. Now, we are working on the automated AP. Unfortunately, we're in a position where an application that we need for it is not working. So IT, Data Prize, and Tyler are trying to figure out why this error is coming up. Once I get that, then I will have more an idea of what's outstanding in the departments, because I'll have that information upfront when the invoices come in, instead of waiting for them to give it back to me.
So in the meantime, do we, all of these things that you have put in place to make corrections? It sounds to me that that's one of the things, you know, you talk to the department heads about how things should work and need to work. This is one of the things that needs to happen, because receiving invoices two and three months later.
No, I get it, and I have, and there are some times that the department say they never received it, and the vendors reach out to me, and then I have to reach out to the department. So I'm hoping with this AP automation that that gets avoided, because the process will change where the invoices will be entered in through Finance and then approved by the departments before we pay them electronically. And that way I have the information upfront instead of on the backend.
Anything?
Yes, so just kind of breaking down some of the contract spending that Councilwoman Bryant Ward requested as far as overall budget expenditures. Are we able to get on a per-vendor status that information? For example, concerned about the overall efficiency and general use of plan check versus other potential vendors?
Yeah, plan check is reimbursable, but yes, I can absolutely do it by vendor, vendor by department, by activity. Yes.
And when we have this discussion, I would presume that our department heads would be here as well to facilitate discussion as to potential vendor use or in-house, right? I mean, is that something we can? Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilman Winkler, do you have anything? All right, hearing that.
Could I just make one quick follow-up question based upon the two previous questions? Just real quick, so the contractors, would that include the Public Information Officer contract? I mean.
Public Information Officer?
I thought we had a contractor that we use for public information.
Yes, that's in contracted services.
So that would be available to look at?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next item up is the American Rescue Plan Act. Don't go anywhere. You're up for at least a few of them. If you want to sit, feel free to sit as well. Just take the mic with you.
So with the deadlines approaching as of December 31st, any amounts that were not spent, we are moving to salaries and so that we use all those funds. And any amount that's remaining by the end of the fiscal year that was designated to projects that haven't been spent will go into an assigned project fund. And on the second page is the recommended budget amendments for the ARPA funds.
Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you again for the information. So you say assigned to fund balance, or does that mean that we use it to balance the budget?
Yeah, no. So you have unrestricted fund balance, and then there's assigned fund balance that has a specific use for. These, these funds were really assigned for specific projects. Because we don't want to lose the funds, then anything that's left that has not been used for those purposes will go into that assigned fund balance instead of being unrestricted.
Okay, thank you. And then, so you've already clarified, we're going to at least encumber them by the end of the year and spend them by the end of next year.
I am doing it by spend.
I'm sorry.
I'm, this amendment is any unspent.
Okay, and then, so that, so if I make sure I'm reading this right. So, so you have a negative number next to MS4 compliance, civil disturbance gear, Will's Park. They're either cut or reduced.
We're reducing the budget for these.
Okay.
But again, we have an assigned project that will still equal the total amount here.
So they're not going to be.
We're moving the budget so that we meet the requirements of the spending of the ARPA funds.
And so at some future time, we'll get a complete new listing of the ARPA projects as of a certain date?
Well.
Updated?
Yeah, you'll see a listing in the next monthly report.
Okay.
But all those projects that you originally approved the budget is still going to have funds to fund those projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, so I need a motion or consensus to move this forward to legislation. Councilwoman Winkler? You're on mute. All right, Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Brings us to our next item, which is the town council meeting schedules.
Apples are humongous.
I know they really are. We have set up for Santa to arrive on Saturday.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, you have in front of you, I hope, the memo from us, including the town council meeting schedules for both town council meetings and then separately the budget process for the preparation adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget. In the past, only the meeting schedule had been adopted by resolution, but we couldn't see any reason why we would do it differently for one schedule. And so we included both of those in, potentially in a resolution, assuming the dates meet with your satisfaction.
All right, I'll open the floor up for any comments or questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the work and putting this together again. So just to refresh my memory, when it's advertised, is it in the Washington Post that the paper we use or?
Which parts are the meeting schedules?
No, well, I mean, for the public hearings, I mean, when we have hearings on the budget. I mean, are they advertised? What paper do we use to advertise them in?
Oh, for, for public hearings?
Yes.
It's in the Southern Maryland News, what used to be the Maryland Independent, and it's now been a, now it's a conglomerate of three different newspapers, I think. That's, that's still the periodical of, this is the local periodical of general circulation.
Okay, so it meets the requirements. Okay, and then I had a question on the, on the budget meetings, that particular calendar. So you have a, so there's only one week for us to review it between March 11th and March 18th? I mean, am I reading that right?
So it will go to you guys on March 11th, and then we'll meet, yes? Yes.
It just concerns me that I'm not sure that that's enough time. That's my feeling, but.
Part of this is because we want to make sure the budget is approved before new council. So it condenses this.
And then so I know that you've plugged in here the potential meeting with the Finance Committee. So, so if they're not in place, that's skipped over?
Well, I'm hoping they're in place. There's three names that are up.
Right.
Yeah.
Are there any more? So there's, I'm trying to remember, how many members were on it?
There should be five members. We had three strong applicants. We are pushing that out on Facebook.
I know you are, right, right.
And it's going to be in the newsletter.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Follow-up from Councilman Jenkins. Thank you again for, both of you for putting this together. How does this compare to our budget schedule this past year? Because it's kind of echoing Councilman Jenkins' concerns. I mean, certainly, we have to be cognizant of future council having a workable budget and having it timely, but we also don't want to force upon them a hastily put-together situation. This last time, we had so many back and forths on the budget. We, we had a greater period of time, and it still, I mean, the communication back and forth just kind of kept going. It was fluid. And so if we've got a week essentially after department heads have been met with and requests have been made, and we don't have a retreat of any kind, I guess I'm concerned about, will we have sufficient time to digest what is presented?
So one of the biggest issues of last year's budget is a large expense for additional benefits and trying to make sure that we had funding for that and if, to raise taxes and trying to get more input from council on how we're going to do that. With that already done, I feel that that's not a hurdle that we're going to have in this budget year. But I can give you updates throughout the budget. So we could provide maybe a draft that has not been finalized, like when we provided to the Finance Committee. Maybe we can provide it to you guys at the same time.
Probably, I know this is difficult. So first off, thank you. I think that's a good idea to alert us as to any warning signs along the way or things we should be considering, right? There could be hot-button issues or not, right? Last year with the pension plan that was being discussed, I mean, look, we're, it's December. We still don't have one. The last meeting we had, we were told that there are unanticipated costs, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know why that may not still be an issue as far as us looking at. Hopefully, it's not a large outlaying cost or anything else beyond what we've stated. But maybe we can at least be aware of any new requests, maybe department heads, before, right? This comes through, because again, when we had the budget retreat, it was helpful, because we had departments explaining where they were coming from and why it was helpful. We had the presentations. I know there was an effort, you know, a couple of weeks ago of kind of eliminating that part of our meetings just for time's sake. But I don't want to lose out on helping departments or being aware of multiple competing interests and not put that all on you. You know what I mean? If you're the one trying to shield us from all the stuff, we may not get the full import of the request. Does that make sense? Is there a way that you have thought about that we might be able to still get the information along the way and not?
Well, I do not cut anything out on the request for the departments. That's always going to come to you guys, or actually, it should come to the town manager, and they make the decision if it comes to you. So as far as finance, we, I don't make the decisions on what's allowed in the budget and what's not. I propose a budget to balance the budget based on what the town manager is recommending.
And in this situation, we have, Madam Mayor is acting in that role, so we've got a precarious situation in that it's a joint legislative option and managing option. And so I think whatever way we can keep it an open book, because I think that'd be helpful for us.
Would it be helpful if I did, in my monthly reports, a budget update? So for February, do a budget update. For March, do a budget update prior to you guys receiving that?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you, you've usually on those erred on the side of thoroughness, which is where we need it. So I would find that helpful, and I appreciate your extra work in that. Thank you.
Ms. Larson, I know this is a very good calendar that you have, but this is not, I mean, this is fluid. So if we need to add a Saturday workshop, we can add a Saturday workshop. We're just adopting, this is where you're looking at to hit the benchmarks in order for us to have a approval of a budget.
I mean, we amended it last year. The only thing is this year, the 22nd is really a hard stop because of the council change. So if we need to add something, do a special meeting. That can always be added in.
We can, okay, that's, and I just wanted to clarify that. So if we're going down the road and we see that there's a whole lot more information that we'd like to be disseminated to the council and have their participation in this budget process, this does not preclude us from adding a Saturday workshop or a Thursday night workshop, whatever that is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just, just make a comment on, this is a peculiar timeframe of which, you know, our mayor has stepped up to take on extra responsibilities and role as a town manager function at the same time. I would just continually ask that we err on the side of more information for council than less, because it's a difficult line that you're walking, right? You, you're in both roles, and prior to the current situation, you may have had less. prior to the current situation, you may have had less information, just like the rest of us. Now you have much more and and sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. And that's a hard walk to walk. So appreciate your effort in that, but just would ask that through the budget process, we continue to work together as we tried to in the past.
Thank you very much.
And my, thank you, Madam Mayor. My concern would be that the town council does not get to request special meetings. So the special meeting is going to be either at the mayor's request, as I was told in an email recently. And so who gets to decide when it's necessary to give us more information? And that that is alarming to me and it has been for the past seven months. So I would like to just make sure that if there's an opportunity or we have a desire to see additional information that we as a council, even if the mayor does not deem it necessary, you don't deem it necessary, that we get to call a special meeting to get that information.
There is a process in place that it does allow council members to call a special meeting. And I don't want to quote it right now because I don't have it in front of me, but it is, I believe, Kelly, you might know better. I believe it is a majority can write in and ask for a special meeting. Thank you for confirming that. So that is in code. All right, good. Thank you very much. All right, any other comments? All right, I'm looking for a consensus to move both of these schedules as or these calendars as presented into legislation. Councilman Chollinger?
I do, I think, just as a comment, Councilman Winkler brought up, I think, an astute point last week as with regards to Thanksgiving. I would just ask that in the November meetings, we keep in mind, you know, we may or may not be here at that point. But keep in mind if we want to kind of pile it more on the 18th rather than have super consequential events on the 25th, that would be helpful in Thanksgiving week when a lot of people are traveling. But I have submitted.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I'm a no.
Councilman Jenkins?
I'm a soft yes, with the with the with the exception that we can, if necessary, call on a special meeting from Sharon and delve in to have more board necessary conversations and discussions about the budget.
And I am a yes, so we have a majority that will move it to legislation. All right, thank you. And next up is the tourism zone. Director Phipps?
Madam Mayor, Town Council, you have in front of you the memo regarding the first, to my knowledge, tourism zone legislation crafted from many, many other municipalities tourism zone legislation. This ordinance will not create the program of incentives and it will not specify exactly what benefits qualifying businesses will receive from the town. We don't know what that's going to look like yet and we didn't want to rush that and also build a program that we would not be able to sustain. So the way we wrote this legislation, we built the basic framework. The administration of the program identified the first tourism zone, allowed some flexibility for additional tourism zones. We don't anticipate that, but we didn't want to eliminate that from consideration. And then we will build, part of the legislation is identifying who will help define the incentives for this program. Because I I can't do that. That's definitely not a me thing. But planning can and in cooperation with the town manager and with the town treasurer, we can see what kind of incentives we can actually offer that won't impact the town and will still support economic development.
All right, questions for Director Phipps?
Yes, Director Phipps, thanks you for taking the lead on this and just for your energy with the project as a whole. I think it's a helpful option for us. I guess my big question is, we don't have those details ironed out. So what is the need to do this now?
This is the first step into developing that program. If we waited, if we could not do this now, let me be straight. But then we would be waiting for the perfect conditions and we'll be looking for the, how can we make a perfect program from the get go? And we would like to build this and then allow us the flexibility to not manage it, but to refine it as we go. And then because we have never run a program like this and we don't have any experience running a program like this, we'll need to see what the after effects are of the incentives we do eventually offer and then have the ability to revise those, depending on economic conditions in the town.
Understood. We're, you know, like many things, things get tweaked, they improve over time.
Absolutely.
We don't even have a town manager, so how could it actually be fully set up yet? But what is listed is that there is, there are the requirements for the businesses within town to be eligible. But then there's an eligible for what aspect? So can you tell us about the capital investment? The $25,000 that was crafted and what? Kind of just talk to us a little bit about that.
So those numbers came out of, one, they started out of other municipalities legislation. Danville, Virginia, actually, they're mostly Virginia because that's where our original inspiration came out of and they had done this many times. So they actually had much higher thresholds for these businesses to qualify for these. In talking with the town treasurer and looking at the tax revenue from our businesses, we didn't feel like we wanted to start out at the same level as Virginia. So we brought it down some. That's where those numbers come from, that.
Okay, and so and I just in trying to look at what that might mean for tourism zones in other places, I saw that it could mean exterior infrastructure type of investment. But obviously, that that would have to be further defined by the program as well.
Yes, and and we also wanted to include, and this is this is where we started getting very complicated and we have to back up a little bit, is we want to provide economic development both for existing businesses and for incoming businesses. And it's very hard to balance those needs because they have very different needs.
Right. So I guess, is there a way to explain what a for a current business that's in town? What the benefit to them would be currently with setting this up other than, hey, we're going to put this together for you down the road?
No.
Is there a benefit on on waiting until we get more details or you don't think that there is?
Honestly, it could go, it could go either way.
We have the buy-in of the $25,000 has got to be spent, but there's no incentive as to why to do that.
Correct. No, this this is really literally the skeleton of the program. It is not the meat of the program.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Hi, any other comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my only question would be, we have a we have ordinances now that are pretty outdated and need to be amended. And as you learn more about the program, the tourism zone and what it would look like for us potentially down the road, putting this in place now could possibly mean that we would have to amend something in here to match what we identify the program to actually look like in the future. So maybe maybe get a few more details about what we can and cannot do with regards to the program before we put an ordinance out there that we might have to modify and tweak. And we have tons of them, you know, in within our town code now that require that. And we don't have the capacity to actually do it. So maybe get more bones to the program before we put an ordinance in place so that it actually represents what we're planning to do.
What kind of details would you want?
So you mentioned, we don't know this yet. We don't have this right now. We don't know what it's going to look like. So when you know what it's going to look like, would that change anything in the ordinance as it's presented today?
We're in new grounds.
That's what I'm saying. And so being under new grounds, putting an ordinance in place without knowing what the program would look like. I don't, it's not what I want to see. It's what's going to make sense to residents to have this in place now and then we finally get a grasp of what the program will look like. Would we have to change anything in this ordinance to complement the program? Because we don't know what it looks like now.
It's very chicken egg, right?
Yeah.
If we don't start anything, we won't have anything to build on. So I'm but on the other hand, no, I get your point. We do a lot of, I don't want to say overthinking, but we do think further than we can reach, I guess. And this was just meant to be the start to that program. All of our ordinances are living documents. They all have been amended at some point and we have a bunch that'll be amended again. Our charter and code are wildly out of date. So I get that. That it is not a will of me to get the legislation passed, it's the will of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, and I would just echo Councilman Chollinger's gratefulness and your energy and effort for this. I do believe, though, that hearing the comments, and I was thinking about it as well, that this is, to me, it should be part of a larger, broader discussion. And I think Councilman Winkler may have suggested it several weeks ago or months ago, if not, that perhaps this is part of a larger discussion to talk about economic development. And I sent the council yesterday a package or a presentation about thinking about that, why why we shouldn't have an economic development function and this could be part of that. And that also would include, again, looking at what we do now in terms of place making and economic development and tourism stuff, because we have a number of boards. And it would just seem to me, we ought to step, from my view, step back and make this part of a larger discussion of what we're doing now, how this would fit in with that, and then look at other examples in Maryland to see how we could leverage this kind of legislation. I'm just not real comfortable right now, this passing an ordinance because we should pass an ordinance. I just think we just need to do a little bit more work as part of a broader discussion to talk about an economic development function in the town.
I do not disagree at all, Councilman.
And this is not meant to denigrate or criticize, it's just an observation.
Oh, no, 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 and I did not take it that way at all. I only feel like, and I do agree with you 100%, we do need to look into economic development. I don't know. I feel like this legislation, and that is definitely, I feel like this legislation is a concrete step we can do to show that we are committed to economic development. It's a very small first step. If we were talking in a broader program, we can talk about the perfect program for years. And I think the La Plata Town Center Corporation is an example of getting a little bit of vertigo about the immensity of how do we get economic development going in the town? So I mean, if we want to show the businesses that we are actually serious about starting economic incentives, we have to figure out a way to do one. This was one of those. It may not be the right one and that's fine.
And I don't disagree with all that you said, right on the money. But unfortunately, we've had two, two, two reports done for the Development Corporation, one in 2012 and one in 2016, which have and which, in my view, still has some relevance of activities and things to do. And we've never taken any action. And so I will take the share of that blame. But 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 part of that, this larger discussion, very frankly, for me is we also, you're right, we need to engage the business community, but to be blunt about it, I haven't really seen it, to be perfectly blunt about it, you know, so. So, you know, we, you're right, we have to keep trying and this is one way to do it. But but I think part of that is also looking at what does the town do now that could help this kind of ordinance? We have a beautification committee, we have keep La Plata beautiful. We have some other elements that are kind of in different committees. And so why isn't there a thought or discussion to talk about how we could merge that into one entity and have different persons or one person actually running them versus, and the volunteers are great because we need volunteers. But I'm just suggesting, we just needed, from my view, we just need to do some kind of an inventory of what we're doing now because they seem to be throwing a dart sometimes and we don't, they're not necessarily coordinated. And so there are some, so in the presentation I gave the council yesterday, there are some examples of communities a lot smaller than us and a lot bigger than us towns. And they have economic development commissions, they and they have enabling legislation, they have what they do and how they do it. And so all I'm saying, perhaps we should look at those as a lessons learned or best practices. That's all.
Ms. Phipps, over the summer, they had the MML Tourism Zone discussion at the summer. And if I recall, the woman that had Virginia Tourism said that one city put in their ordinance, we are a tourism zone city. And there was nothing else to support it. And I understand through that symposium that was there that the reasoning to do that is to start it. And they defined, as you have defined in here, defined a district and defined, this is what we're going to do. They didn't have any incentives outlined, they didn't have anything else. It just said, we're declaring this a tourism zone. And that's what they built upon. Is that something that, as other council members have said, you know, it's to show a good faith into doing an economic development, that we are trying to do something for our businesses? But to define that as it is defined here and to say, this is what we're going to do, is that something that we can adopt and move forward with? Is that not advised?
What? You certainly can. It wouldn't have any effect. I mean, we would identify a tourism zone, but there's, it would provide no benefits. I mean, it would be that one small, concrete step, easily attainable, low hanging fruit that we would have a tourism zone ordinance to build on. But that would be it.
Councilman Chollinger?
Yes. I think to Councilman Jenkins' point, I think the most difficult part right now is we've got some very key and important positions within the town that we can't really coordinate a lot of different things down the road all at one time. So I can appreciate taking a step in the right direction. But as a business owner, it's a little bit hard to see, okay, here's how you qualify. We're committed to you, partner with us, but we can't figure out either a tax incentive or rate decrease or you're coming into town, we just can't figure that out. And I think that's not on, 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 you know, it's just because we don't have that ability to do that right now. I mean, I know if you have a comment on that, sure.
I do, because this sounds like a really exciting opportunity to engage businesses in what kind of incentives would benefit you? How, what, what are, what have been your, your, your obstacles in the past? Why haven't you expanded your business?
So have we done that?
No.
Okay, so we could do that and make this meaningful rather than just claim, hey, we're a tourism zone. Here, we're a tourism zone because that's just.
I also, and again, I can go either way on this, but I also feel like having a concrete thing in place instead of a more of a talking thing. If I have to hear again about how long we've talked about the vision plan for downtown La Plata and none of it ever got executed, this is a step that we can take, we can show real progress, very small progress, and something that they can engage in and tell us, what will these incentives, what would you like these incentives to look like?
Do we need an ordinance to engage in conversation with local businesses? I mean, no, right?
No, no, but to look serious about it, yes.
I think if we were serious about it, we'd have some one incentive listed in in this. And and I don't know. I mean, I just, we are serious enough to say, they've got to commit $25,000 to infrastructure, exterior improvements, whatever.
Or provide the job or full time jobs.
Right, right. And we can't come up with a single benefit. I that's just, I feel like this is another opportunity for a look at what we're doing, but we're not actually providing a benefit to the resident or the businesses of the town. And you would say, not yet, right?
I would.
I would say, this is not the requisite step. The requisite step is, hey, what do you guys need to make this work? And I guess, to your point, I think, you know, the egg's coming before the chicken. And I guess, to your point, I think, you know, the egg's coming before the chicken, you think the chicken's coming before the egg. So, I appreciate, I just, I think it would make more sense if we had an incentive for the businesses, and we can tweak and make things better along the way, but just having the stick and not, you know, the benefit is difficult for me to understand with this.
Any other comments? All right, I will take a, see if there's a consensus to move this forward. Councilman Trolinger?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Brian Ward?
No.
Councilman Jenkins?
No.
All right, so it will not move forward. All right, thank you very much, and I guess we, you have some work to tweak that, so hopefully we'll see this again soon. Thank you for your hard work, Director Fitz. All right, Ms. Minor, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, vacancies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have applications for the Ethics Commission, and since we don't have an ex officio that sits on the Ethics Commission, Director Fitz and myself interviewed an applicant who happens to be in the room, Mr. Patrick McCormick, for the position for the Ethics Commission. And our recommendation is to appoint Mr. McCormick to that position, which would run, would run through July 24, 2026.
All right, any questions? All right, so I will look for a motion to accept Mr. McCormick's application for Ethics Commission.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Patrick McCormick's application for the Ethics Commission for July 2024 to July 2026.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, and welcome. I look forward to meeting you. All right, and what else do you have?
Okay, we have another committee that does not have an ex officio member on it. Ms. Larson has reviewed applications for the Finance Committee and is proposing three members, Michael Gann, Joseph Norris, and Kathy Brandt for the four-year appointments.
All right, do I have any questions from the floor?
Do we expect more applicants? I think Ms. Larson said earlier, there's five total on the committee?
We hope to, we're pushing it out on social media and the newsletter, so hopefully.
Is there a deadline? I can't recall if there's a deadline.
We don't have a deadline.
Okay.
No. And from what I've heard, all three of these applicants were very excited and ready to get started.
All right, any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion to accept these three candidates for the Finance Committee?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept these three candidates, Mike Gann, Joseph Norris, Kathy Brandt, to the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to, is that done with our Boards and Commissions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're down to our legislation. The first one is for the Resolution 24-27 for the La Plata Town Council 2025 Meeting Schedules.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, a resolution concerning La Plata Town Council 2025 Meeting Schedules for the purpose of maintaining regulated and publicly accessible schedules of the Town Council meetings and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 24-27 as presented? All right, I make a motion to adopt 24-27 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. That brings us to Ordinance 24-18, it's a second reading.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, Ordinance 24-18, Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget, 2023 Series Bonds, Second Reading for Consideration of Adoption. Your令是 concerning amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget 2023 Series Bonds for the purpose of amending the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 24 Financial Plan Budget to reflect the activities of the 2023 Series Bonds and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 24-18 as presented?
I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 24-18, Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget, 2023 Series Bonds as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Emergency Ordinance 24-19.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, Emergency Ordinance 24-19, Town of La Plata ARPA Spending Plan, Fourth Amendment for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption, and Emergency Ordinance Concerning Town of La Plata ARPA Spending Plan, Fourth Amendment for the Purpose of Amending the Town of La Plata American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Spending Plan, and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Emergency Ordinance 24-19 as presented?
I would make a motion to adopt Emergency Ordinance 24-19, Town of La Plata ARPA Spending Plan, Fourth Amendment as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and that brings us down to our reports from Mayor and Town Council. Councilman Winkler, I see that you are back. Do you have a report to give? All right, I'm not sure you're in the position to report out, so I will go to Councilman Trolinger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keep La Plata Beautiful met on November 25th. We are changing our meeting times to accommodate for everyone's attendance. Unfortunately, at this time, I wasn't able to attend, but we do have a number of different items going on as far as what's especially immediately relevant. The litter bees are going to be moving forward, we had a 12-1 cleanup at Kent Avenue, 2025 schedule is going to continue, the first Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. starting in March. Sustainable Maryland, as everyone knows, we achieved bronze status here in the Town of La Plata, which is a big win for the town. We do have our next meeting scheduled as a hybrid meeting on January 27th at 3:00 p.m. We are currently looking for a new member. I believe we have a very qualified resident who's reached out with an application, so hopefully that goes well, and that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning Commission met on December 2nd, I think, December 3rd, and we received several updates from the interim planning director. One of the things that came before the commission was the approval of an exception for the library for parking, but because of the request from the county and the reason we didn't, it was recommended to deny it, they didn't align, so the Planning Commission didn't approve that denial, and we asked for additional information. So, hopefully, we'll receive that additional information back from the interim planning director and more information to come.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
I have nothing to report. I'm not sure, we are meeting tomorrow, no, we're not meeting tomorrow, okay? Got it, that's right. Yeah, we are seeking a member. Mary Winkler served for a number of years, but her term is up, so now we're looking for another member, so hopefully, we'll be in a position to come back to you with a nomination for a new member on the commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I hope that everyone had a wonderful and restful Thanksgiving. Some of my updates are, on Sunday, we had the Old Time Holiday Gathering, another success this year. The tree lighting, of course, was a highlight and brought joy to many, many people. Colleen did an incredible job, and the weather cooperated, so that was really nice to see. I have had several inquiries about the leaf collection, Public Works is actively picking up the loose leaves around town. Please check our website for the approximate schedule for your area. Your patience is greatly appreciated because they had a brief delay, one of the trucks broke down, so they couldn't pick up as many leaves, and it seems like those leaves keep multiplying, so they are out there, I'm happy to report, and they hopefully will have all of those picked up soon. This Saturday, we have breakfast with Santa. I'm sure it's going to be another fantastic event, and while all the time slots are filled, we look forward to welcoming those who have registered. And one of the other contests that are going on right now is the 2024 Light Up La Plata. It's really cool, there's a map that's associated with those who have submitted their entry there, and this is where you, as citizens, can go on the website and vote for your favorite lit-up house or business, there's different categories, and that started yesterday, December 9th, and it goes on till the 15th, so please, get on the website or Facebook and cast your vote for your favorite light-up business and/or home. And with that, that concludes my report. We do have a reason to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion from the council to go into closed session?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority to close session subsection 3-305B, 15, 3, deployments or implementation of critical infrastructure topic information technology.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Director Fitz, could you do a roll call, please? If you are amenable to going into closed session, please say aye, otherwise, say nay. Councilman Trolinger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
And Mayor James is an aye as well. Thank you very much, and this concludes our regular Town Council meeting.